It happened. Welcome everyone to the regular monthly meeting of the Board of Commissioners held for the purpose of transacting the general business of the township. Today's date is September tenth, two thousand and twenty five. The meeting is being held in the Springfield Township Building and is also being offered in a live streaming feature. The meeting will also be made available on the township's website beginning tomorrow morning. Comments will not be accepted remotely during the meeting, but instructions for submitting public comment in advance of tonight's meeting were provided part of the posted agenda. So given that, Mr. Taylor, did we receive any public comment prior to the meeting?
No, Mr. President, no public comments were received.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor. I would ask that you please join, stand the Board of Commissioners, join the Board of Commissioners, stand in moment of silent reflection to honor the servicemen and women who place themselves in harm's way in order to help preserve our safety at home overseas. Please remain standing for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. At this time, I would entertain a motion dispensing with the reading of the minutes of the previous meeting. It's written and recorded in the official minute book of the township.
I'll make that motion.
Motion is there a second?
Second.
Questions or comments? Well, favorite, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed nay. Please record a six zero vote. Commissioner McNamara is not with us this evening, otherwise all the other board members are. And a couple announcements before we get to the agenda. Board of Commissioners conducted an executive session as part of our September eighth, two thousand and twenty five workshop meeting to discuss two litigation matters and two personnel matters. Also, a recognition at the September fifth, two thousand and twenty five meeting of the Board of Commissioners of Abington Township. Their board recognized the contributions of the Springfield Township Emergency Services Personnel for their response to the five alarm fire that occurred at SPS Technologies on February seventeenth, two thousand and twenty five. Throughout this extended operation, conducted in freezing temperatures accompanied by high winds and dangerous ice conditions, paid personnel and volunteer firefighters from Springfield Township displayed extraordinary courage, professionalism, and endurance to help contain the fire, protect nearby properties, and safeguard the community. Board of Commissioners acknowledges and commands the actions of those who responded to this catastrophic fire, including the Springfield Township Emergency Management Coordinator, Springfield Township Police and Public Works Personnel, and members of the Flower Town, Orland, and Windmore Fire Companies. Now, the board is open to comments or questions from the public. The board draws particular attention to those items listed on the agenda this evening. Please be advised that once the committee reports begin, the board can no longer accept questions from the floor. At the conclusion of the committee reports, public comments will once again be accepted. However, official action on those issues listed on the agenda will have already taken place. Therefore, if you wish to comment on an agenda item, now would be the time. Okay. Hearing none, we will now go into our committee reports. And I will start as the chairman of the Public Safety Committee. I have one motion this evening. I move the Board of Commissioners amend the Springfield Township Code, Section one oh seven dash thirty two dot D, Schedule nine, which covers parking prohibition by extending the existing parking restrictions on the south side of Willow Grove Avenue from Flower Town Avenue to a point one hundred and fifty one feet easterly thereof. The amended regulations are intended to eliminate a site obstruction that has been verified by the traffic safety officer. So that is our motion, my motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed nay. Please record a six zero vote. And that concludes my report. We will now go to the Chairman of the Community Development Committee, Commissioner Wilson.
I have no report, Mr. President.
Thank you, Commissioner Wilson. We'll now go to the Chairman of the Administrative Fiscal Affairs and Zoning Committee, Commissioner Cobb.
Thank you, Mr. President. First up regarding the bill listing for the month, I moved that the Board of Commissioners approve the August check reconciliation in the amount of nine hundred and forty seven thousand, nine hundred and twenty one dollars and seventy eight cents, and September bill listing in the amount of nine hundred and fifty thousand, eight hundred and fifty eight dollars and fifty three cents. And that's my motion.
We have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Questions or comments? Well, favorite, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed nay. Please record a six zero vote.
Uh, next, regarding the two thousand and twenty six budget schedule. Uh, here is the following budget meeting schedule, uh, which will start with um, meetings with the support agencies, including fire, ambulance, and all of the various planning agencies. That will be on September seventeenth at seven o'clock. Uh, the budget workshop meeting will be held on October fifteenth at seven o'clock. And the budget presentation will be held the following month on November twelfth at seven thirty. Uh, that will then be followed in December with the budget hearing on the tenth of December at seven thirty with the adoption of the budget held just right afterwards on that same day of the tenth of December at seven thirty. All meetings will be held at the Springfield Township Building, uh, and will be posted online. Next, regarding, uh, the actuarial assumed rate of return, uh, Resolution number sixteen seventy three. I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt Resolution number sixteen seventy three, a resolution authorizing and directing the Springfield Township Pension Fund Actuary to utilize an assumed rate of return from investments of six percent from the salary defined benefit pension plan commencing with the two thousand and twenty five actuarial valuation report and the two thousand and twenty six minimum municipal obligation certificates, certifications. The current assumed rate of return is six point two five percent. In two thousand and sixteen, the Board of Commissioners amended the Springfield Township Code by creating a defined contribution pension plan for all salaried, nonrepresented employees hired after January first, two thousand and sixteen. As a result of this action, the number of active participants in the salary defined benefit pension plan has continued to decrease. Both the pension actuary and investment manager are recommending that the actuarial assumed rate of return be lowered to ensure proper funding of the plan. That is my motion.
We have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Questions or comments? Well, in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed nay. Please record a six zero vote.
Next, regarding Resolution number sixteen seventy four, Pension Fund MMOs. The Board of Commissioners have a statutory obligation to adopt a resolution setting forth the minimum municipal obligations to properly fund the township's employee pension plans and to incorporate the minimum municipal obligations into their succeeding year township budget. Therefore, I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt Resolution number sixteen seventy four, a resolution establishing the two thousand and twenty six pension fund minimum municipal obligations for the three defined benefit and one defined contribution pension plans. And that's my motion.
We have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Questions or comments? Well, favorite, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed nay. Please record a six zero vote.
Next, regarding professional fees. Uh, I move that the Board of Commissioners authorize the two thousand and twenty six hourly rate schedule for Woodrow and Associates Municipal Civil Engineers. The fee schedule includes a combined average hourly increase of three point nine percent. And that is my motion.
We have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Questions or comments? Well, favorite, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed nay. Please record a six zero.
Um, all right, from pensions to engineering fees to auditors. This really is the lions, tigers, and bears. Uh, I move that the Board Commissioners reappoint B. Berg, Bergval and Company Certified Public Accountants to serve the Springfield Township Auditors to audit the township's financial statements for the year ending on December thirty first, two thousand and twenty five, consistent with the audit engagement letter dated August eleventh, two thousand and twenty five. The cost of the engagement is twenty two thousand, one hundred and fifty dollars plus in alternate in the amount of four thousand, eight hundred dollars to compile the pension activity for the four pension funds. And that is my motion.
We have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Questions or comments? Well, favorite, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed nay. Please record a six zero vote. Now you got the short ones out of the way.
Yep, now we getting the fun stuff. Um, bankruptcy settlement, LVL Engineering. On October nineteenth, two thousand and twenty, Springfield Township was informed by the Pennsylvania's Office of the Attorney General that it was a potential victim in a fraud investigation related to the township's third-party consulting engineer, Boucher and James Incorporated, the Incorporated. The Board of Commissioners promptly terminated its relationship with the appointed engineer and refused to pay invoices charged to the township by Boucher and James pending the resolution of the fraud investigation. Subsequent to the fraud investigation, Boucher and James Incorporated changed its name to LVL Engineering Group. On or about, uh, on June tenth, two thousand and twenty four, LVL Engineering Group filed a Chapter Seven bankruptcy petition in the Eastern District of Pennsylvania. As a result of this notice, the township filed a claim against LVL Engineering for engineering fees that the Attorney General alleges were overbilled to the township. As part of the bankruptcy proceedings, the Chapter Seven trustee for LVL Engineering challenged the amount of the township's claim and initiated proceedings against the township for certain unpaid engineering invoices. The trustee also seeks to seek to receive a portion of any restitution that may be received by the township in connection with the fraud investigation. A mediated conference between both parties was conducted on August twenty eighth of this year, uh, during which a tentative settlement agreement was reached. Therefore, I move that the Board of Commissioners approve the settlement of the bankruptcy trustee's objection to the township's proof of claim and adversary proceeding against the township for payment of outstanding invoices upon the following terms. One, the trustee agrees to dismiss its claim against the township for sixty two thousand, two hundred and twenty dollars and seventeen cents for engineering services rendered to the township with prejudice. Two, the trustee and the township agreed to an allowed unsecured claim in the amount of thirty seven thousand, five hundred dollars in favor of the township in the pending Chapter Seven bankruptcy proceedings of LVL Engineering Group Incorporated. Three, the trustee and the township agree that the township shall keep any additional restitution paid to the township in connection with the Pennsylvania Office of the Attorney General's fraud investigation involving the billing practices of Boucher and James, the former township engineer, without any reduction to the agreed-upon unsecured claim. And finally, four, the township solicitor and the township manager are authorized to complete and execute all of the necessary paperwork to effectuate settlement upon these terms and conditions. And that is my motion.
We have a long motion, is there a short second?
Second.
Questions or comments?
The, uh, the net gain to the township will be what? About?
The, the, the biggest challenge in this was they were seeking sixty two thousand, two hundred and twenty dollars in unpaid bills. So we were successful in having them release that. The township has an unsecured claim that's in its favor in the amount of thirty seven thousand, five hundred dollars. However, as a result of the bankruptcy, we, we don't know at this time how much we'll actually receive of that. And then, and the third point is we get to keep any restitution that we may receive through any of the criminal, uh, pleas that were, okay?
So the expectation of the thirty seven thousand is ten cents on the dollar, something like that.
Yeah. If, if you look at all the other bankruptcy claims that, um...
And that's just up to the trustees, pretty much?
In the bankruptcy court.
And the bankruptcy court, yeah, sure.
Okay.
Okay, any other questions or comments? All in favor, we signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed nay. Please record a six zero vote.
And finally, regarding the upcoming zoning hearing board agenda for the month of September. The zoning hearing board of Springfield Township will meet on Monday, September twenty ninth at seven o'clock uh, in this building where they'll hear the following applications. Uh, the first application is from Brooke Demarco and Mark Brol, owners of the property located at five seventeen East Willow Grove Avenue in Windmore. The owners have filed an appeal, uh, to the zoning officer, uh, seeking approval to alter the roof line of an existing nonconforming building. The detached accessory building now exceeds the twelve-foot height limits. The renovations to the structure have been made without obtaining the required building permits, and that property is zoned within the A Residential District of Ward Five of Springfield Township. Um, they'll also hear the application of GP Ventures Holding Co., LLC, leaseholder for the property located at one twelve Loraine Avenue in Orland. That applicant is requesting a variance, seeking approval to operate light manufacturing facility on the site. The business involves the assembly, firearm parts, and the application of a protective sealant on those parts. The facility is not open to the public, and there will be no retail sales from the site. That property is zoned within the B one Business District of Ward Three of the township. And finally, they will hear the application of Karen and Adam Levine, owners of the property located at seven oh one Thomas Road in Philadelphia. Those owners are seeking a variance, seeking approval to increase the existing building coverage on the property from sixteen point five percent to nineteen point seven percent of the total lot area. That property is limited to no greater than fifteen percent building coverage. Uh, that property is zoned within the A double A Residential District of Ward One of the township. Again, those three applications will be heard at the next zoning hearing board meeting on September twenty ninth at seven o'clock in this room. And, Mr. Manager, just to confirm again regarding the second application of GP Ventures Holding Co., they're just manufacturing individual parts, not actually, there's, there's no assembling of actual...
That's correct, there's no assembly of firearms, it's just individual components that are going to be manufactured.
Manufactured there and, and moved out, okay. That is my report.
Thank you, Mr. Cobb. And just one point of clarity, that one zoning case from Thomas Road, that's a Philadelphia zip code. But that is a Springfield Township crap.
Has brought.
All right, thank you, Commissioner Cobb. We will now go to the Chairwoman, the Parks and Recreational Resources Committee, Commissioner Ratzel.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have two motions today. Uh, first, regarding the Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee, and we have one of our, um, non-voting student representatives here, you're welcome to come forward if you'd like. I move that the Board of Commissioners appoint Grace D'Amico of Orland and Kadar Moore of Windmore as non-voting student representatives to the Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee. Ms. D'Amico is a junior, and Mr. Moore is a senior at Springfield Township High School. That is my first motion.
We have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Questions or comments? Well, in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed nay. Please record a six zero vote.
My next motion is regarding the Recreation Center Advisory Committee. I move that the Board of Commissioners appoint Elliot Midha of Windmore as a non-voting student representative to the Recreation Center Advisory Committee. Mr. Midha is a sophomore at Springfield Township High School. That is my motion.
We have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Questions or comments?
I would just add briefly, just because, uh, one of the student reps is here. We had the pleasure of, uh, interviewing the three, uh, student applicants on Monday night, and, uh, our youth of Springfield are very well represented by the, the three individuals that will be, uh, appointed to these committees, and, um, all three were wildly impressive and, and, um, again, the, the youth be very well represented by these individuals, so.
Sure, well said.
Congratulations.
Grace is here with us tonight, so thank you for being here. Any other questions or comments? All in favor, wait, did we already vote? We already voted. Did we vote? We didn't vote on the second one.
We didn't vote, no.
All right, we have the second motion. Um, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed nay. Please record a six zero vote.
Uh, and I just basically want to remark the same, and we welcome all the students who, first of all, wonderful candidates, and we continue to welcome students to come and participate with the government in, in any way, uh, and that we have other committees. Uh, just so you know, there was technically only one position open. We had three applicants, all who, all who were outstanding and said that they'd be willing to participate in any way, and we thought there would be value in having two young people serve on the Parks and Rec Advisory Committee who you may know were working right now heavily on some pretty large changes in parks, including building a rec center, including building a park at Walnut Lane, and we thought that would be a good use of their time. And then also, uh, Mr. Elliot Midha also recommend, or, uh, expressed his great interest specifically in the Recreation Center, and we thought that was a great opportunity to be sure that he was able to participate specifically in his great interests. And so that's how we were able to capture all these wonderful students, so thank you again. Um, and that's all I have for you, Mr. President. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Commissioner Ratzel. Now go to the Chairman of the Environmental Resources Committee, Commissioner May.
Thank you, Mr. President. Begin with the recycling report. During the month of August, two thousand and twenty five, Springfield Township residents recycled one hundred forty one point four tons of material with a household participation rate of seventy six point six percent. The net cost for the month was twenty four thousand, five hundred dollars and seven cents. And a note on household hazardous waste. The board would like to remind residents that household hazardous waste is not suitable for collection by the township and should not be placed with regular refuse. Household hazardous waste includes such items as oil-based paint and varnish, paint thinners, swimming pool chemicals, pesticides and weed killers, gasoline, oil, and fuel additives, drain cleaners and solvents, fluorescent tubes, and CFLs, also known as compact fluorescent light bulbs. Each year, Montgomery County conducts special drop-off collections events to properly dispose of household hazardous waste. The next collection event will be on Saturday, September twentieth. That is not this weekend, but the next, at the Springfield Ninth Grade Center in Royersford, PA. The final collection event for two thousand and twenty five will be held on Sunday, October twelfth, at the Lower Marion Township Transfer Station in Penn Valley, PA. Pre-registration is required for either event at www.montgomerycountypa.gov, S-G-O-V. And then lastly, uh, the, regarding the municipal campus solar photovoltaic project. On July eleventh, two thousand and twenty five, proposals were received by Springfield Township in response to a request for proposals for a rooftop solar photovoltaic project at the Springfield Township Municipal Campus. Proposals were received timely from six different bidders under two options. One was a direct purchase, and two was a power purchase agreement. After extensive vetting by the township's engineering and solar consultants, a recommendation has been made to proceed with the direct purchase option due to the additional costs associated with the power purchase agreement. Direct purchase proposals were received from six different bidders and ranged in price from six hundred twenty one, twenty nine thousand, one hundred and twenty five dollars to one million, fourteen thousand, four hundred and fifty seven dol- seven dollars. After applying the thirty percent federal rebate pursuant to the Inflation Reduction Act and other incentives available from Pico Energy, the township's current electricity provider, the net price ranges from four thirteen, six ninety two to six eighty three, four twenty four, with potential payback for the system as early as three point six six years. That's payback from the savings that we would get from the electricity out of the, the project versus buying from the, uh, from Pico. Therefore, I move that the Board of Commissioners award a contract to Spots Brothers, Inc. of Schuylkill Haven, PA, for their low bid price of six hundred twenty nine thousand, one hundred and twenty five dollars to supply and install a rooftop solar array at the Springfield Township Municipal Campus in accordance with their sealed proposal received July eleventh, two thousand and twenty five, last revised August twenty sixth, two thousand and twenty five. The award is subject to Spots Brothers entering into a written agreement with Springfield Township, setting forth the terms and responsibilities of the contractor and in a form that is acceptable to the township solicitor. That is my motion.
We have a motion, is there a second? Questions or comments?
I have a comment. Uh, when this was first proposed to us, probably almost two years ago now, uh, and with a price tag of a million bucks, I, I was honestly less than enthusiastic. Um, I, uh, didn't believe that, uh, we would be able to receive the, uh, the, uh, the total value of the credits and the overall cost of the, of the project, uh, I thought, uh, and the returns were, were very, very minimal, uh, uh, and, uh, fraught with the possibility of them never coming to realization. Uh, I have subsequently, uh, uh, after reviewing all the new information and the, the actual pricing on, on the installation, have come to believe that this is the, the right thing to do. Um, I think that, uh, we have an opportunity here, a, a long-term opportunity to, in, to really, uh, uh, produce substantial savings for the township, uh, even, even under the, uh, kind of gloomy assumptions that it's going to take initially five or six years to get our money back. Uh, but, but the reality is, after we get our money back, it's basically free. So, so I think this is a, although it's, you know, six hundred and twenty nine thousand bucks is a lot of money. Um, I think it's, uh, it's money well spent, the same way as I believe that the money that we spent on the green roof, on the money that we spent on the hybrid, uh, police cars, that the money that we spent on the LED conversion of the streetlights, um, is, is going to add to the, you know, overall, uh, uh, savings and, uh, contribute significantly to our stated goal of being, uh, basically energy independent by twenty thirty, twenty fifty. So, uh, I'm strongly encouraging my fellow commissioners to support this proposal.
Well said, Peter, I can't say it any better.
I might just add, um, as, uh, it was discussed in the, in the workshops.
Mike, front.
Sorry, when we, when we talked about this in the workshops, um, I actually think that a, a return on the investment in, in five and a half or six years wouldn't necessarily be gloomy, it'd be exciting. And if we get it closer to three years, that's even better, but, um, even, even that aside, and even the aside of the fact that we are going to be, uh, you know, having a, a carbon neutral uh, energy source for the energy for, um, for this campus, um, and, um, you know, looking to expand that. Um, I think that as we've experienced on the residential side, increase in energy prices, um, I think that's really what we can expect in, in the future moving forward. Um, when you look at the marketplace for energy, and we've seen, uh, private companies like Microsoft uh, purchasing, uh, Three Mile Island to get Three Mile Island back online uh, because of their need for energy, energy. Uh, Facebook has done the same with a nuclear facility outside of Chicago, um, where the, uh, need for energy, uh, it far exceeds what we currently have in the United States and is rapidly expanding as, uh, artificial intelligence and AGI continue to get incorporated, uh, into our lives. Um, so I think that energy prices really are going to be at a premium, and the fact that we are now going to control our destiny and, and going to be kind of removing ourselves from that marketplace um, is, will be a benefit for the township long-term. And so this is just, I think, a very smart, uh, long-term plan on the part of, uh, on this board. And I thank, uh, Joy and the other advocates that worked with us diligently for a while on, um, advocating for this progress, project.
Yeah, I want, I wanted to second that. We do have Julie Bergy with us, she's been a champion of this project. And, um, we've also had Ron Salantano, who has given a ton of his time towards this. I think it's going to be incredibly valuable for the environment. Uh, but as has always been the case with the, the Environmental Advisory Committee that we have here, while they champion things for the environment, they also have been able to save this township money over and over again. And I think this project will reflect that, that same mission. So, yeah, I just really proud of our EAC, and I am tremendously thankful for, for all their efforts.
Awesome, well said, by both.
Hey, Mr. Manager, pending, uh, the agreement with the installers, when, when do you think we could expect, uh, this project to?
I think they're eager to get started as soon as possible. And, and I think we'll move. Andy and I already talked about a conference call with our, um, electrical engineers and our solar consultants to try and work out the details of what we want to make sure we have in that agreement. Uh, Spots has been very, very responsive to all of our requests for information, and they're eager to get started, so. I think it'll be soon. I would say well before the end of the year.
Very good, Sonny Yatler.
Oh, Sonny.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, we have the motion, we have the second. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed nay. Please record a six zero vote.
That includes my report, Mr. President.
Thank you, Commissioner May. We're now going to go to the Chairwoman of the Public Works and Facilities Committee, Commissioner McNamara, who is not here this evening, so I believe Commissioner Wilson will give her a report.
Mr. President, I have a motion regarding the Flower Town Country Club. I move that the Board of Commissioners authorize the execution of an amendment to the lease dated May one, twenty thousand and six, two thousand and six, between Springfield Township and TJKFCC LLC for the property known as the Flower Town Country Club, one hundred and fifty McCluskey Road, Flower Town. The terms of the amendment include, one, an extension to the term of the lease for three additional years commencing January one... an extension to the term of the lease for three additional years commencing January 1, 2006, and ending on December 31st, uh, 2028. Two, the rent for the extension period shall be $200,000 beginning January 1, 2026, 2010 beginning January 1, 2027, and $2,020,000 beginning January 1, 2028. Number three, a swimming pool pass shall be created to provide single-day access to the swimming pool for Springfield Township residents. The pool pass shall be made available for loan at the Free Public Library of Springfield Township, subject to certain, uh, blackout dates. Number four, the lessee is required to perform all work necessary on the property to remedy certain safety conditions identified by the township's insurance carrier. Number five, the lessee has agreed to complete specific capital improvements valued at $194,000 at its sole cost to enhance the property and operations. And last but not least, number six, the lessee has agreed to certain environmental covenants regarding application, storage, and use of pesticides to maintain the golf course. That is my motion.
We have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Questions or comments?
I think I just want to thank those who brought up and advocated for, um, the health concerns of golf courses in general. Although it came at a late hour, we appreciate that advocacy and, um, appreciate the, um, uh, tenant for being willing to include it in the lease on short notice.
And, uh, just one comment with regard to the, the financing here. Uh, the, the original lease had a provision for, uh, a shared, um, some shared revenue, uh, based on operational performances at the, at the establishment. This lease is just a flat three-year lease for, uh, for an annual sum as I, I, uh, I decided.
And those amounts, uh, just to be clear, were $200,000 beginning with January 1, 2027, $210,000 January 1, 2027, and $220,000 beginning January 1, 2028. All three of those numbers are, exceed the amounts that we've received to date on an annual lease for the rent, under the previous scenario.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? We have a motion and a second, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 All opposed nay. Please record a six zero vote.
That concludes Beth's comments.
Thank you, Commissioner Wilson, we'll now go to the Chairman of the Cultural Resources Committee, Commissioner Morris.
Thank you, Mr. President, uh, I'd like to make an announcement about Community Day. The Springfield Township Community Day Celebration will take place on Sunday, October 5th, 2025, from 10 a.m. to 1 p.m. at System Park in Erdenheim. Uh, please join your neighbors for a day filled with family fun, including invitationals, base gaming, balloon creations and other surprises. Food, music, fishing, fire ambulance equipment displays will be provided free of charge. Community Day is made possible via the generous support of our business community and various community volunteers. For more information, please contact or visit, uh, www.erdenheimcivic.org. That concludes my announcement.
Our Commissioner Morris was going to be in the dunk tank, is that true?
Sunday, Sunday, Sunday.
He can neither confirm nor deny.
That was non-responsive.
Yeah, yeah.
It's like an NFL coach answer right there.
There you go, there you go.
We're going to keep the main thing the main thing, Mr. President.
I'll give you a hint, the early water is colder, but it's cleaner.
Oh, yes, yes.
If you want the early shit.
Yeah. But, but the other big changes, we're no longer, we're not having the, uh, 5K run, right?
No 5K run.
No 5K run. So just starting, 10 o'clock.
10 a.m.
10 a.m.
Inflatables.
Okay.
Fire equipment.
Good.
There you go, thank you, Commissioner Morris.
Thanks, Tim.
Uh, okay, uh, the, um, committee reports are done, so the board is now open once again to receiving public comment.
Joy, please come to the mic. You gotta come to the mic, we can't hear you.
Joy, bring joy.
You, you've previously shared with us, or you've also advocated on behalf of the township to the greater Philadelphia area with how we're sort of at the vanguard of.
Okay, thank you, Joy.
Keep our fingers crossed. Joy.
And honestly, your advocacy pushes it along, you know, we, we, everyone has a part, but you're.
And the EAC's leadership.
Absolutely.
Yeah, I feel like the EAC is, is very practical. You know, they, they see things with, things with, you know, very clear eyes and try to find the best path forward. And the collaborative way that we work there, you know, is, is tremendous, and it's led to a lot of great successes in only my short time being involved with this board.
And I just, I would just add that it's not just pure advocacy, it's really hard work to put together reports and the material, all the research necessary to create the, the advocacy and, and the advocacy arm of the EAC. And so that time should be highlighted, I know this is for a lot of folks in the EC spending many hours of their spare time to be sure that we're doing, um, unique and exciting things like this, so really appreciate all those extra hours. And I hope, um, our fellow residents can really appreciate all those hours and, and also be reminded that it's always welcome, you know, the more people doing this research on any matter that is important to you, uh, like, like these students stepping forward this week and, and participating, offering their time, it's always welcome here. And, um, you can see the benefits of it in decisions like these, so thank you, Joy.
I'll take your word for it about two years, but two years goes like it's that.
I mean, that, yeah.
Wow. That's incredible. Uh, okay. No other public comment, I will entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting.
So moved.
Motion, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed nay. Please record a six zero vote, we are adjourned, thank you for coming.
Does it, yeah.